I'd like to call to order the Buckswood Town Council meeting for Thursday, August 25, 2016. Road call, please, Kathy.
Joe York.
Here.
Paul Raff.
Here.
David Keen.
Here.
Peter Stewart.
Here.
Members of the council, Paul Gordon and Robert Carmichael Jr.
Okay, item three is presentation of any town council recognitions. We did have one scheduled tonight, but Mr. Netto couldn't make it, so we're going to schedule that for the next...
The eighth.
The eighth, September 8th. Okay, item four, considered minutes of previous meetings? We don't have it. Okay, item five, receive and review correspondence and documents. First one being weekly construction summary. Susan?
Yes, you have in your packet the week of the eighth and the week of the fifteenth work that's being done on the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. They remain on budget and on time, so I would encourage any of you who are interested in a tour of the site to let me know, and I'll set it up with our construction inspector. It's getting to be a very interesting location. Would you like a tour? Okay.
Item B, Maine Municipal Association, dividends for property and casualty of workers' compensation. Susan?
Yes, pleased to let you know that the town received a dividend check from Maine Municipal in the amount of $8,242 for our good loss experience in property and casualty and workers' comp. Received a similar one last year. We tend to do very well, and this reduces the...this is used as an offset to the amount that's budgeted for insurance on an annual basis, so as long as we keep up the good experience rating, we will continue to see these kind of dividends.
Okay, thank you. Item C, Hancock County Budget Advisory Committee caucus for 9/9/16.
Yes, and that is being held at the Deer Isle Town Office on 70 Church Street and Deer Isle at 6:00 on Friday, September 9th, for the purpose of electing a municipal officer to serve a three-year term on the Budget Advisory Committee for Hancock County. So if any one of you are interested in participating, to be considered for that, that's when the meeting is.
Okay, item D, floodplain management ordinance, confirmation of compliance.
It's just a copy of the letter that we received from Janet Parker from the Floodplain Management Program, the State of Maine Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry, and that the floodplain management ordinance that you had amended has been reviewed and been found to be consistent with what's required, which allows flood insurance to be...
Good.
Et cetera.
Any questions on any of these items from the council? Okay, we'll go on to item six, new ordinances to be considered or introduced. Ordinance Committee recommendations from 8/25/16 meeting. Peter?
We just got a meeting with Jeff Hammond, and we are going to have him take Chapter 10 to the Planning Board for a review of the changes that were recommended to look at, probably come back from that for next meeting or meeting after to act on. And we also looked at Chapter 6, dealing with licenses, and Jeff has some work, but he's going to do one of that for us, so we'll be determined at a later date, so.
Thank you. Okay, going on to item seven, discussion items, managers clarification of direction or council discussions or input on issues. First one being from the Finance Committee, update on the Long Pond lots. Chairman of the Finance Committee, is that you?
Yeah.
We met tonight, and Susan had some information. We discussed the last time about having a landowner on Long Pond Moosehorn Stream. We were going to try to contact him to see if he was willing to sell some of that land. That is still in the works. We also were told there's some information of some other land that may become available that we're going to look at also. So we took no action. One of the other...one of the butters to a decent property across Long Pond on 46 was here, explained to them that we're not taking any action on any of our lots right now, but then they were well aware of that, so we're going to keep them updated at that time. But it is in the process, and Susan and Jeff Fitzgerald are both working on different things.
And the intent is to try to, before giving up any waterfront lot, look for an alternative place for a boat launch?
Correct. We want to have public access to one of the ponds here in town, absolutely.
Okay, all right. Item two is Nicholson Avenue Lot?
That is a lot that's come up that somebody had asked about purchasing, and would be a number of butters that are involved in this one lot, and the idiosyncrasies that are involved with the lot as far as involving Mauser Lane, from all the piece of Mauser Lane, the old undeveloped Mauser Lane. It's going to take some more work. We're going to look at us again, but we are not going to do anything with that as far as acting on the person that asked to buy it. If anything, it will go up to bid at a time to determine later.
Okay, so both these items basically have been tabled?
They're being worked on.
Yep, yep, okay. Item B, Solid Waste Committee update from 8/25/16 meeting. Is that Joe?
Yes. At the Solid Waste Committee, we had a discussion on the Skidsteer, which is starting to fail at transfer station, and as well as looking into single stream for our recyclable. We are able to...we're going to look into that and have another meeting on the eighth, is I think what we're looking for. And we're looking actually into maybe a lease option on the Skidsteer itself.
Okay. Item C, Waterfront Committee update, information submitted. Who's Chairman of that? You?
Yeah, we've got three out of four. Last one, I'll reping this week, ask for the information from him or his assistant, and we'll try and have that in by the meeting on the eighth.
Okay, thank you. Item D, land use violations, 489 Millville Road, code enforcement officer. Jeffrey?
Thank you, Jeff Hammond, code officer. This matter began as a land use issue was brought to my attention in the spring of 2012, when there was word of a business activity taking place at 489 Millville Road. I went out and looked at it and discovered there was in fact some business activity taking place. I contacted the owner and explained to him that the use needed a permit. He came in and took care of that. So there was a permit issued for what was described as a home-based business conducting auto repairs. That was issued in August of 2012. Everything was fine until about two years later. I started receiving complaints about junk vehicles being stored on the property, and I went out again and looked at it and identified about five to six vehicles at the time, sent letters out to the owner. The first one didn't receive a reply. Second letter sent about six months later, didn't receive a reply, and the vehicles are still there. Finally, I did receive a reply when Mr. Allen, Peter Allen, is a property owner, called me to discuss the junk vehicles and assured me at the time, this is in December of 2015, that he would remove the vehicles the following spring when the ground firmed up, and I agreed to that. Well, spring came and went, and the vehicles were not removed. As a matter of fact, I think the number has gone up since then. I spoke to Councilor New York, who told me he visited the property recently and counted eight vehicles there now that would be classified as junk vehicles. So I sent another letter, third letter, to Mr. Allen, and he did not reply to that either, so my only other recourse is to file a formal violation notice, which I did do on June 15th, 2016. The violation notice ordered the property owner to remove the violation within 30 days, and he did not comply with that. So I informed Mr. Allen by another letter that the land use issue would be taken to the Town Council on August 25th unless he cleaned up the yard, removed the junk vehicles. I drove by the property today, and they're still there. So I have a few pictures I'd like to take a moment to show you to familiarize you with this, in case you're not familiar where this is. Could you get the lights, Kathy? These are courtesy Google Earth, and what we're looking at here is the intersection of Millville Road and Jacoba Pond Road, and this is the lot we're talking about tonight. This is the house, garage. You can see a few junk vehicles here. This is the backyard where most of the junk vehicles are located. I can count three in this image, which was taken from May of 2015. This one happens to be sitting on top of the leash field, which is not a good idea. This is just a little bit closer look-up view. Shows the house, the garage. This is where the auto repair business is located, and the junk vehicles in the back, and this one may be as well as this one, I'm not sure. There's one there that probably is. A couple of these might be customer vehicles. It's hard to tell in this image here. And this is what the property looks like. This picture is from Google Earth, and it's taken from 2011, actually, so it doesn't look quite that way today, but fairly similar. So I have some photos that I took through the trees, which makes viewing the vehicles a little bit difficult. This was taken from December 28th of 2015, and I've marked where there are about six vehicles that you can identify in this photo here. This photo below from April of this year, you can pick up five vehicles in this photo here.
Those were both from the same angle?
They're both taken from Millville Road. No, excuse me, this is from Millville Road. This is from Jacoba Pond Road. I tried to take a photo today, but the foliage is quite thick there, so I couldn't get a good picture of the vehicles. But I did...you can see them through the trees, and there are at least six still vehicles still parked there. All of them I would describe as junk vehicles. So the purpose of my visit here tonight is to ask for your assistance. Mr. Allen unfortunately has not been communicating with me, has not taken...made any efforts that I can see to resolve the violation issue. So my next step, obviously, is to ask the court to deal with this, and before I can do that, I need your permission.
Is Mr. Allen here tonight?
I don't believe so.
And that isn't a licensed junkyard or anything like that?
No, it's not. In fact, auto graveyards are not allowed use.
In that area?
Yeah.
Okay, but he does have a license to run a repair shop there?
A home-based business. And by the way, that permit limits the storage of only two customer vehicles in the yard at a time.
Okay, that was my next question, okay.
And no storage of junk vehicles. And I understand that at least one of those vehicles is being kept there for parts, which clearly is not allowed under the home business license.
Do you need a motion to go forward to send this, or is this a recommendation or consensus, or?
One more concern I had was, is there any way that we could actually make physical contact with Peter Allen prior to doing this? You say you've sent letters and whatnot, but I just wonder if there's a way that he can...Peter works a lot. He usually gets out of work at 6:30 every night. So my question is, is there a way that we can set up a time that you guys could actually more have a physical conversation, or is letters the only way that we're going to be able to take care of it?
I'm more than happy to have a conversation with Peter, either in my office or on the phone. I understand you're a friend of his, and if you want to make contact, reach out and ask him to call me to set up a time to meet or actually talk on the phone if that's his preference.
If that's possible with the council, I would like that, because this is a concern that Peter's had. He's...he mentioned to me that he's gotten a letter pretty much every month, roughly.
No, no, it's been more like on a six-month basis, every six months.
Six months, okay. He's had several letters, and I've helped him move a couple vehicles that were actually movable. Some of these are not druggable or anything as well, so...and again, some of them are not his. What's happened is customers have dropped them off to get them fixed, and he says it's going to cost this much, and they say, oh, you can just have it of a sort. So his option would be either to fix that up and make money, or to send it to the junkyard. So it's possible that maybe with a conversation with either Jeff Hammond or the manager to see if that's a valuable idea.
And you've had the conversations with him. He knows this is a violation.
Yes, and what I assured Peter was that, fine, I said, talk to Jeff Hammond, find out what he...what you're in violation of, what he wants done, and then do that, because that's...
Has he done that?
If that's the simplest way to...
Has he answered any of your correspondence at all?
He replied to the letter I sent to him in December 2015 with the statement that he would remove the vehicles in the following spring when the ground dried up. That's the last time I've contacted...been contacted by him. He hasn't replied to any other letter I've sent to him.
So he hasn't reached out to the town in any way. He's waiting for us, and I can appreciate that, but we've reached out to him. If he wants to have the conversation, he can reach out also.
Yeah, you guys decide as you will. I just...I wanted to mention that, because I could definitely hopefully assist in this. Now, why is it...why can't he have an automotive repair shop at his house? Because I'm assuming he bought the house, and maybe he didn't know that he's not allowed to have an auto repair shop?
Well, he has a home-based business that allows auto repairs.
Because you told him that it was illegal to have a automotive repair shop?
Right, a full-scale vehicle repair business is not allowed use in that zone he's in.
Because of it's too close to the road, or what's the...why can't it be changed for him to allow him to have what he has there, I guess?
Well, it's not just his property. It's the entire zone where that use is not allowed.
All right. Fair enough. I apologize.
I believe that he can operate his home-based business if he doesn't have more than two vehicles on the property that are...that are customer vehicles. You just can't store junk vehicles, and that's...
Well, junk vehicles considered something that's not inspected or unregistered, and we know many auto repair shops that have such, and they always have more than two vehicles that they're...so would it have not been right to even permit a home-based business as an automotive repair shop, or...because it's almost impossible to have less than two vehicles in your driveway, I guess is what I'm...
Well, that's the nature of home-based businesses. They are required to be incidental and secondary to the residential use of the property. That's what home-based businesses are all about. And this particular business, well, any home-based business, is not allowed to have outdoor storage of materials. So if he needed to keep vehicles on hand for parts, that's not allowed activity if it's a home-based business. If you're a full-scale auto repair business, then you could do that.
Sure. So let's just go to the example that Peter bought the house, and then knowing that he wanted to have that garage as an automotive repair shop, and then later on to find out that it's not allowed to have, I mean, doesn't that kind of cause a little bit of a problem there as far as...for his general idea of buying the property? I mean, there's no way that...there's no variances or anything allowed for that, for that, for him?
Well, no.
He's doing it part-time, for sure, because he's trying just to make ends meet, just as all of us are trying to do.
Our ordinance does not provide for variances for uses that are not allowed in the zoning district where, you know, where the government's the property we're talking about, and waivers aren't allowed either. The only...the only method that he could pursue to establish a permit to call the full-scale vehicle service business is through contract zoning.
Contract zoning.
Right.
Now, what about other automotive repair shops, such as, there's one out in Williams Pond. It's been there a while, of course. Was that established prior to these zoning rules?
Oh, yes, long before, yeah.
Okay. I guess, back to my statement, if there's any way that we can reach out to him as far as having an actual physical conversation with him, I think that would...
I'd be more than happy to talk to him.
And give somewhat of a time limit for it, or whatever, and if not, then continue with...
I think under the circumstances, he knows the violations, his failure to communicate with the town. I'd be willing to give him until the next council meeting to talk with Jeff, set up a schedule of when he's going to get those vehicles out of there, and if not, then we're going to send it to legal action.
That'd be much...
In other words, one last chance. I mean, he already knows the situation.
Yeah, and again, I would understand that he's trying to make ends meet as well, so...
That's just my opinion. I don't know how the rest of the council feels on that. Anybody got a comment? Given him until...if he doesn't get in touch with Jeff by the next council meeting and make arrangements to clean up the violation, it'll go to enforcement?
I'd make a motion to table until the next meeting, if that's possible.
With those...with those stipulations?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion and a second to table this issue pending. Joe, you're going to try to talk to the gentleman, make sure he gets in touch with Jeff?
Yes.
And give him an opportunity to correct the situation, or we're going to go to legal action with it. When was the last time that you spoke to him?
I spoke to him tonight to see if he was going to come to me, and he said that he'd get out at 6:30, and he wasn't probably not going to be able to make it this time. But he explained to me what he thought he had to do, and I just wanted to make sure of that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and on the floor to table this issue until the next full Town Council meeting, with the stipulations that Mr. Allen get in touch with our code enforcement officer prior to that meeting, make an arrangement either to correct the violations, or we will take legal action. Okay, anything further from the public on this issue? Yes, sir?
Scott from Buckswood. I got a real concern with the way this ordinance read that home-based businesses can't have...store equipment or materials. Carpenter has trailers and ladders and whatnot, and I agree that Peter's, you know, in violation of what Jeff is asking, but the concern I have is other businesses. I mean, the black market was there, Millville Market was there for years and years, and it's not a...it can't be commercial. I'm kind of confused on that whole thing with Jamie Thomas up the road, and I don't know what the corner of Jacob Buck and Millville has to do with any difference with William Pond and Millville Market, but, you know, I guess. But I really have a concern. I mean, are you guys really going to squash businesses by telling them they can't store equipment and materials in their yard?
Junk.
Oh, junk, I agree.
Yes.
I agree, but the way he worded it was materials. I mean, that would mean a carpenter can't pile his lumber.
This is what we're dealing with, junk scot.
I realize that, but I mean, the way that's worded, though, one could be misconstrued that you can't have building materials in your yard, right? I mean...
We're dealing with junk.
Okay, so then we need to classify it as junk then?
And that's what it is. That's what we're talking about.
Okay, well, materials to do business isn't junk.
Junk cars.
Right.
Junk cars.
Okay, so a home-based business that says a carpenter has trailers, ladders, material for a job, he can't...he can store that in his yard?
I assume he can. Correct, Jeff?
That wouldn't be a home-based business if he was a carpenter doing work.
Yeah, that's a different...
Well, if he had a full-time job, and he was doing it on the side, i.e. Scott Furnell, I'd work three days a week.
Well, it'd be different. If he was working in his wood shop, I assume he had to have it in the wood shop. He couldn't have it laying around outside.
So like a pile of material that needed to be sawed out, couldn't be in the yard with a tarp over it? I mean, it's...
Scott, this is...
Well, I mean, how I'm looking at it...
Scott, this is December 8, 2014, letter set regarding the storage of five, six junk vehicles on the property.
I completely understand that.
And then it goes on to say, again, it's about...it's about junk vehicles. And I look at the fairness to, what about these folks that have garages that are set up, and they have lifts that they're being taxed on, and other property, you know?
Oh, I agree. I understand, yeah.
To this. So I...the mayor asked what I thought about this. This is going back to May 2012. Okay, one more month, but I mean, I think this is...this is pretty fair.
Oh, yeah, and I...you know, that aside, I agree. You know, the junk car part, absolutely. I just...my concern is, is, you know, I hate to put, you know, put it this way, but if you look at, you know, Over the Hedge, the kid's cartoon, the neighborhood woman wants the grass cut at a half an inch. How far is the town going to go dictating to our taxpayers what they can do and what they can't do? And I want to make sure that it's a home-based business.
As far as the taxpayer tells to go, and this is an issue.
Well, that's why I'm raising this concern.
All right.
Okay?
All right.
Because, you know, if I have a home-based business, and I got a job I got coming up, I want to be able to store my, you know, 102-by-fours under a tarp in the front yard to keep them dry, for one, but, you know, also, I don't want to cause trouble with the town either. I want to be able to operate on weekends and days I have off.
I'm sure you probably wouldn't have an issue.
I hope not. I don't know, and if I did, I would take care of it.
This is an issue that's been out there for a long time.
Take care of it.
Yeah, absolutely. No, thank you, guys.
It's junk vehicles, thank you. Anybody else have anything to say on this topic?
Jim Morrison, East Buckswood. I went over and visited this young man last night, and I visited his neighbors. My first question would have to be, who complained about the situation, or who made the complaint? This is how he started his, you know, you said that you had, had complaints. Is that something that you can allow the public to know? Does this young man have a chance to face the people that, I'm sorry? Does he have a chance to face the people that are bringing the subject up? I mean, is it something that is bothering traffic that's going by? Is it a...
It's a violation.
It's an ordinance of the town.
I understand it's an ordinance, I understand that, but, you know, this guy is a, he's a good citizen. He's paying his taxes, he's trying to take care of his family, he's working, as he said, until 6:30 at night. He, he's not like, you know, just running an abandoned mess out there. He has reason for those vehicles to be there. I mean, it's not, why do we judge whether his reasons are good or not? What, what ordinance is unwavable and there's no variance to that? How come there's no variance to an ordinance for this guy when I, I listen to variances and ordinance changes time after time right here? That's all I'm asking.
Anybody else want to speak on this top, subject before we vote on it? Anything further from the council? All those in favor?
Are we just voting on tabling the matter or what?
Yeah. All those in favor of tabling until the next meeting? All those opposed? Motion passes, table to the next council meeting with the understanding that you're going to contact Mr. Allen. He's required to get in touch with the code enforcement officer and, and take corrective action.
Yes.
Alright, we're going to go on to agenda items to approve, resolve R 2017-18 to award the salt contract to New England Salt for the price of $54.10 a ton.
I want to make a note that there's an error on the resolve in that in one place it had $53.10 instead of $54.10. I think that Rich Rotella had noted that. Thank you, Rich. The actual price is $54.10 and that is $3.05 lower than the price per ton that the town paid last year and when we budgeted for this year, we budgeted it at last year's price. So, there will be a savings in that.
How would the council like to proceed?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item B to approve resolve R 2017-19 to approve the financial audit for 2014/2015 fiscal year. Susan?
Okay, this has been some time in coming because if you remember correctly when I started here a year ago, 1415 year, which ended in June before I got here, there were a number of things that hadn't been completed and it took some time to get those completed and then to get the audit completed, and it is. And I'm pleased to report that the end of 1415 was financially healthy. The only department that, whose budget was overdrawn was Public Works and that, if you remember, was the winter from...
Bad place.
It was the winter from Bad Place. But that overall, we returned $287,000 to fund balance in that, in that year from the budget process and that things were in good standing once you get them all done. So, that is the current year's audit, the one that ended, the end of June should be completed within the month. So, we should be, that one, this one will be followed that and then we'll be current again on where we are.
Thank you very much. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council?
Do you have an estimate on what might be returned to the fund balance this year or not at the moment?
From the, this current year's, it's, it's close to the same. It may be closer to 400 than 300 from this past year. We had, we had more, but we set aside 168 and brought it into this year's budget from the school that turned back money and then we had excess collections in excise tax that gave us more as well. So, it's, I believe that the amount that we should see returned is about the same or just slightly less than what we budgeted to use in this fiscal year.
And that's probably going to be kind of the normal?
The, the goal is to keep the fund balance at the level that it stands, which is approximately $6 million that allows the town to not borrow in anticipation of taxes. And it, the, the return of monies is if you are within sort of 5% of your bottom line at the end of the year, you return money. It's hard to get much closer than that, just so you don't go over. But it is, the town budgets annually through its, the overlay to keep that fund balance where you need it to, to be in order to not be borrowing in anticipation of taxes and to be able to maintain your reserves and for the purchase of pieces of equipment over time. So, there's not, there's nothing in last year's or this year's budget that's an attempt or a way to reduce fund balance beyond that $6 million that the council had indicated it wanted to keep as a floor for where we were.
Awesome. Thank you for your good work.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes.
Just to let, just to let people know out in the audience, this is a 90-page document for the 2014-15 financial audit, mostly spreadsheets. It was not a fun read. It was...
Okay, item nine, resignations, appointments, assignments, or elections. We have none, right? Okay, item 10, approve quick claim deeds and discharges of deeds.
Take a motion, take it up.
No, is that the same one? Is this one?
Yes, that's it.
Okay. We have a motion to, to take up item not on the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, we are taking up, you want to...
Yes, we have a, a quick claim deed for Colleen Vayou, 1054 River Road in Bucksport. This was a tax-acquired property that the owner has paid all taxes, costs, and interest through current year and that, that payment came in today by certified check. And so, I asked the deputy tax collector to prepare this so that the council could act on this. This is a, this is a positive event and so it's an approval of, of the return of this status from tax-acquired to, back to the, in the name of the owner.
Okay. Anybody would like to make a motion to accept the quick claim deed from Colleen Vayou?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the motion. Any further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item 11 is town manager's report.
Yes. Some of you may have noticed, we have, and I've attached a picture to this, but we have a new traffic speed sign that we received from the Maine Department of Transportation at no cost to the town. Several of our police staff members and our IT person attended training on the use and programming of the sign, which also has the ability to collect a good amount of data on speed practices. They intended that at the end of July, it's a great addition to our traffic monitoring and control measures and, and as I said, we got at no cost to the town and the cost of these signs is over $7,000. So, that was a good addition. The Maine Department of Agriculture, Conservation, and Forestry has a program called the Maine Obsolete Pesticides Collection Program that is operating again this year as a free way for residents to dispose of these kinds of items. Collections will occur in Prescott, Bangor, Augusta, and Portland and people must register by September 23rd to take advantage of the program. You can get more information by calling 287-2731 or going to their website. We will have this information on the town's website so that if people are interested in most likely attending the Bangor session to get rid of this stuff at no cost, if they can do so. I'm pleased to report that we received six bids for the truck loan for the three-year, paired with a low bidder being Camden National with a rate of 1.75%. This will be on the next council agenda for approval. That's, we got some excellent rates. That is a really good rate for that three-year note. We had a visit from, we participated in the federal agencies' visit that was part of the Maine Coors Products Industries EDAT team that was sent to Maine. And last Wednesday when they were here, we had 177-foot private yacht dock. We had Wednesdays on Main with music. We had people all over Main Street and these representatives not only went to a meeting, they, our community economic development director showed them all over the place, from the walkway to local businesses. And I think it's fair to say that they were extremely impressed with the community and how it has responded since the closure of the mill in, in no way being disrespectful to the past and what's allowed this community to build, but in the fact that, given the load that it took that the community did not sit and wait for entities to come and fix it or save it, but that the members of the community, and that's not just elected officials, but the members of this community stepped up and have taken on a number of projects from Heart and Soul to Main Street Bucksport, Wednesdays on Main, the Arts Group, all sorts of things are happening. Some that were going before and others that have started since that, that are helping Bucksport move forward. And they also are interested in assisting the town with things such as brownfields money and, and ways to leverage that so that the former mill site can be restored in an expeditious way to new uses that can provide not only valuation for the community but jobs for its residents. So, it was, it was a good visit. Main Street Bucksport had an event this past Friday night, a fundraiser, which, at which time they raised more than $4,000 for that group and its work with the downtown businesses. I attended the event. It was a lovely evening and the group has lots of energy, lots of enthusiasm, lots of ideas and are doing this as a way to, to bring downtown Bucksport businesses together. So, that's great. And finally, I met with the senior resource, well, with, yeah, with the senior resource group this week and asked them if they would agree to serve as the review committee for our AARP age-friendly community designation. We're required to have a oversight review committee for, to sort of make sure that we stay on task and on target. And I thought, what better committee could there be than people who are already in some ways holding our feet to the fire to make sure that Bucksport keeps the age-friendly community thing on target? And they agreed to do so. So, that's my report.
Well, thank you. Anybody have any questions on any of that? If not, we're going to go on to...
Actually, just wanted to go quick when we're talking age-friendly, I'm going to go the other direction and I know the last couple of Wednesdays they've had Pokemon, Pokefest out here with a lot of young kids and, and I, I think they've all acted really fine out there. They, no, no issues with the police. So, I think that's another good thing to, to spread from six to nine to ninety.
That was going that Wednesday too. It was, it was...
Yeah.
Okay, item 12 is set public hearings or hold public hearings on pool of any licenses or permits. We have one license request, a Victorious license for Richard Gray doing business as Blue Water Seafood. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Victorious license for Richard Gray. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. We have any, we don't have any public hearings to set. Okay, item 13, discussion items not on the agenda for the council or the public.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like the permission to go back for just a moment because I, I think I'm going to be out of town the next meeting for, to number, let's see, what was it here? 7D, the land use violation at 489 Millvale. Jeff, I gather that the gentleman got his home-based business permit, right?
That's correct.
And when, when that happens, do you have a discussion with that person as to what this means? Or is there anything in writing that he gets in regard to any rules and regulations? Or is he referred anywhere as opposed to this permit just going to him? What, what's the process that happens?
He, we met in my office. He brought us the application in and I explained to him what the standards apply to. I gave him a copy of the standards that was attached to the permit that they issued. So, I believe he understood the limitations that apply to home-based businesses.
And with these, did these limitations in this particular case include anything about junk cars or stuff in the yard or anything like that that he's now in violation of?
No, as a matter of fact, I don't think he got a copy of the actual notice of violation, but the notice of violation was for a violation of, it was an unpermitted automobile graveyard, which really had nothing to do with the home-based business operation. He was, by definition, he had established an automobile graveyard. That was what was cited in the notice of violation.
So, that's not in the standards, per se?
The standards that pertain to home-based businesses?
Right.
No.
Obviously. So, what I'm raising just as a question, since I'm not going to be here the next meeting, when someone gets a permit, you know, doesn't it, can't you make the argument that it falls on them when they decide to do something to make sure that that's within the confines of the permit? And if that happened, I'm sure he would have been told that the junk cars, but he could have been perhaps innocently not known that. But once he finds out he's in violation, then you'd have to take the approach that you take, I gather.
Right, as, as the, the document that, that I have given you to account for the record, I notified him several times about the issue of him keeping junk vehicles on his property. So, he was, he was informed about that at a very early time, back in, let's see, when was the first letter? Back in December 8, 2014, was the first time I brought his attention the issue about storing junk vehicles on the property.
Okay, thank you.
One more, just one more question. Is there anywhere in the town of Bucksport that junk graveyard, automobile graveyard are allowed or no?
Yes, yes, it's allowed use.
It is okay.
In certain parts of town, right?
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
One, I gather that the Black Market that was out there in that general location and the Jamie's Place, those are grandfathered. They were in existence before the...
The Black Market, I don't know what that is. I've never heard of that name before.
Well, it's not the Black Market.
Millvale Hall.
It was a grocery store.
Yeah, Millvale Hall.
Millvale Mall.
But that was grandfathered, I assume, with a grocery store out there for a number of years.
Thomas's Business on Williams Pond Road, I believe, was, it was permitted.
I know it's...
Actually, that use was established without a permit. He received an after-the-fact permit from the planning board. And it was obviously an allowed use at the time anyway. I don't recall the exact date that was permitted though. I think it was permitted before the adoption of our current name disorderance. They had different, different requirements for that type of use.
Thank you. You all set, David?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, item 13, discussion items not on the agenda for the council or the public. Is there any discussion items from the public tonight?
Yes, sir. Hello.
Hi.
Trying to be efficient.
I didn't see you there.
Thank you, sir. Rich Rotella, Community and Economic Development Director. I just want to remind everybody of the events that are coming up rather soon. BACUS, the Bucksport Area Cultural Arts Society will be holding the fifth annual gala concert this Friday night at BPAC at 7:00 PM. The last Wednesday on Main event is this upcoming Wednesday. It'll be the Mini Buskers on Main Street ending at the gazebo. The next Heart and Soul Block Party will be September 18th. It's a Sunday. It's from 4:00 to 6:00 and that will be at the Bucks Mills Rod and Gun Club. I also want to let everyone know Creatively Maine is the pop-up shop that created Pokefest. Creatively Maine has been a pop-up every opportunity we've had to have one. Unfortunately, this will be Sonia Twombly's last go at it in... Unfortunately, this will be Sonia Twombly's last go at it in town, not for anything that the town did, but on a positive note because of the formation of the Lighthouse Art Center Gallery. A lot of her artisans are moving into there. Sonia has her stuff in other businesses already. So I'd just like to personally go on record to thank Sonia for being part of the community and when she has been. She's done a lot of neat things for community involvement, like pie baking this past December and Poki Fest, which has brought a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor? Everyone may have noticed that there was a big article in the current edition of the Enterprise about this BACIS up at the junior high, middle school, this week. This is a world-class event that's coming to Bucksport, and I think the community ought to seriously consider supporting it. It's a big deal. And it's all kinds of music, not just classical music, Broadway and what have you.
Any other discussion items from the public? Any discussion items from the council? If not, we'll go on to item 14, upcoming public hearings, designations of topics for committee assignments, and scheduling of committee meetings. Do we have anything we need to schedule?
One that we haven't talked about yet, but I'd like to send to Streets and Roads. I absolutely applaud how quick the handicap parking got moved and taken care of. My one concern that I've seen on several paths, as the one on Elm Street, I'd like to have Streets and Roads look at, possibly stop the park, have no parking from where that handicap spot ends to Main Street. Driving by there, if there's a vehicle on either side of the handicap spot, I don't know how we'd ever get a handicap vehicle in there for the, for the use that we intended. So we'd have Streets and Roads look at that to see if that's something we want to limit the parking below that towards Main Street.
Can we do that with the solid...
Solid waste before the next...
Could I add something to the Streets and Roads committee?
Of course you can.
I've had some calls and concerns about the parking on Franklin Street. It's right up on the hill by the public safety as you're going towards McDonald Street. There's been a lot of cars continuing to park in there.
That's a bad spot.
And I spoke with the chief today, and it is a bad spot, but there's nothing they can do because there's no ordinance saying they can't park there. And so I'd like to have Streets and Road take a look at it and get some comments on that.
Here, we got that down on, okay.
Yeah, near the hill between McCannick and McConville.
Yes.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. We have any other committee assignments that we need to schedule?
Solid waste for the 8th. And I think waterfront was gonna do the 8th. So if we did like we did this time, we could do 5, 5:30, and 6.
Sound all right with everybody?
Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
So 5 Streets, 5:30, solid waste, waterfront, 6. We good with that?
Sounds good.
We don't have finance. The long pond issue may be...
Let's see where we are in the 8th, and if we have to schedule that for the 22nd.
Okay.
29th, rather, because remember, it's the last Thursday of the month.
Have we taken any action in the executive session?
No, we're not taking action. We're just getting...
Okay. We're going on to item 15, Executive Session for the Purpose of Discussing a Labor Contract for 2016 to 2019 for the police, fire, and public works. And we're not gonna be taking any action coming out of the executive session.
But the only thing that, is that if you refer it to the following meeting, the contracts to following meeting for, for approval is what, if you, the only...
We like what you say that we're gonna ratify in the next meeting.
Then you would refer that to the, to be inserted in the contract for approval at the next council. I just received this language that we had, was from the ratification yesterday from the union, and it's what we had come to ten, to agreement on and what the, the police, fire, and Public Works Department had voted to ratify. But it's now the council, my opportunity to discuss that with the council, and if you agree, it comes out and then goes to council for final approval once the, this language is put into the contract.
So we, we may come out and...
Refer the language forward for approval.
Or we may, may say that we want it to be contested, reviewed.
You can say anything you want to, but they're, coming out is either gonna go forward or...
Okay.
No.
Okay. Okay. Clear, executive session?